Good evening, welcome to the Wednesday, October 11th, 2023, meeting of the Chappaqua Central School District Board of Education. We thank West Orchard for hosting us this evening. The board has been in executive session since 5:45 this evening. Can I have a motion, please, to reopen the public meeting? All in favor? Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay. Alright, so we are in West Orchard tonight because we have the privilege of learning alongside some of our students. So I want to invite up Principal Jim Scoog, who will begin our presentation this evening. So thank you, Jim, and welcome to our West Orchard families who are here.
Thank you, welcome everyone to West Orchard. If we could just cue up the slides for a quick second. So what we're going to do is do a brief introduction here, and then we're going to go down into a fourth grade classroom with 10 of our students. And you will observe a lesson using our Ruler approach. Can we get the slides up? Oh, alright. So Ruler is an approach that we use with students to engage them in social, emotional learning skills and adaptability. And it also is a research-based approach that will, in addition to having them cope with emotions and how to navigate difficult situations, it also increases their sense of belonging, which on the next slide... So on this slide here, with our strategic priorities for the next five years, one of which is improving students' sense of belonging. Okay, and in addition to the strategic plan, we've refined some target areas for elementary school, and this is under the research-based cultural responsive practices, identity work, and social emotional learning. I'm going to turn it over to Jennifer Keane Thompson to talk about Ruler specifically.
Thanks, Mr. Scoog. So Ruler is a social, emotional learning curriculum. Ruler is, as Mr. Scoog said, an evidence-based approach to social, emotional learning, and it's developed at the Yale Center for Emotional Intelligence. Ruler is an acronym for Recognize, Understand, Label, Express, and Regulate. And Ruler supports the entire school community, and it supports the entire school community in emotional learning. So the research has shown that emotions influence your decision-making, your creativity, your mental and physical well-being, the ability to form and maintain positive relationships, and academic and workplace performance. So there are four main tools in the Ruler curriculum. The first one is the Community Charter, which supports the classroom community in determining how they want to feel when they're in the classroom and what steps they need to take in order to feel that way. The Charter outlines the agreed-upon feelings and behaviors of the members of a community in order to build a positive and safe emotional climate so that all members feel seen, valued, and heard. The next tool that's essential to this program is the Mood Meter. The Mood Meter provides students with the opportunity to develop their self and social awareness. By practicing this routine daily, they start to notice patterns of how they feel and the causes of them. And after students check in and recognize their emotional states, they can begin to evaluate those feelings, and it's helpful for them to begin to understand how their emotions affect their current goals and situations. And embedded within this routine are informal restorative practices of effective questions and statements, which are questions about how personal experiences or expressions and feelings share between people in the community. So we're about to see, in this Serone classroom, the Meta Moment. The Meta Moment is a six-step process that teaches self-regulation strategies and how to handle stressful situations. What will happen after this lesson that we're about to see in the Serone is the Blueprint. The Blueprint is a Ruler tool that uses a set of questions to prompt self-regulation and helps us resolve conflicts. When we use the Blueprint, we can build our perspective-taking skills, experience more empathy, and develop better conflict-management strategies. Now, Serone is going to take us through the Meta Moment.
If you had an unexpected free day, you can just take some time and jot it on your... And when you're ready, you can join in the community. I just want to explain the Mood Meter. Sure, so Mood Meter is a routine that we do daily as like a check-in to get a pulse on where we're at for the day. We know that our students learn best when they're starting the day with a positive mindset. So it kind of just gives me a pulse for where my students are at, and it gives each of the students a pulse for where their classmates are at. It also allows students to pinpoint where they are feeling to start the day. So, Serones, you can join me at the Community Circle when you're ready. One routine that we use daily as part of the Ruler, which core twisters, team building, making connections, major part of our SEL here. Alright, Theo?
About to interrupt, another thing.
We hate the post-it students.
So we have 20, 15, 20 minutes to vote in the assembly running, and our adult partnership, so Andrew Shaver is our... And she's down here for the last 15, 20 minutes of the movement. So they have two adults that...
So usually, we have a much larger circle. But, so the first thing we do when we check in with our Community Circle as part of our SEL, which we use Community Circle throughout the day, not just in the morning, we use it as part of our lessons. It's a great routine to use for that team building and making connections. We go around and we share our mood, and we try to pinpoint what is causing us to feel that way. Each student gets a talking piece, so it allows for student voice while the rest of the students are actively listening. So we're not all speaking at the same time, but we're able to make those connections as we take turns with the talking piece. So I'm feeling a little nervous this evening, but that's okay because I have all of you here.
I shared this this morning, but I feel tired because my brother woke me up at 6 o'clock in the morning. You should know how that feels. You look longer than me.
So, Dr. Duncan, I don't have the talking piece, but each student also gets the opportunity to pass, and we always go back around giving that student a chance to chime in when they feel comfortable enough to do so.
I'm feeling a little late because I had a friend over today, and now we're just doing this.
Um, I, all of the day, I would take some time to relax, and I'd probably watch maybe invite a friend over to check.
And sometimes you forget Ms. Shaver, so I'm going to hand you the talking piece.
I'm feeling really excited. I'm going to include it. Thank you for always having me in your classroom in the morning to join in with your Community Circle.
Mason, did you want to share? How you feeling this afternoon? Did you want to share how you're feeling this afternoon?
Honestly, I'm feeling kind of excited because I'm more of this, I want to get interviewed. Do you feel like I'm on to me?
And I'm having Hamilton, did you mention, Mason? Okay. So the second time we do around our Community Circle, we focus on a thought prompt. So it could be anything, just in order to build connections and to get our day going, to start off with that positive mindset. So what would you like to do if you had an unexpected free day? I know I would probably like to go fishing.
I'd probably play video games with my family.
I don't know, I don't do that.
I'd probably invite a friend over to play sports or football, something like that.
Um, I'd probably, um, have a friend and then like, like go somewhere, like maybe some fairytale.
So, probably, thanks, Doctor.
Well, I'd probably invite a friend over or have a party event.
I would do a big job for this.
Um, I'm really feeling the vibe of this.
I love that. Great, thank you all for sharing. So if you want to turn, so you can see the smart word. Every, every day, we do some sort of SEL lesson or activity, and where we're at in our Ruler unit is that we are working on how to strategize to shift our feelings from the negative, low energy, to the positive, high energy. So you'll see during the PowerPoint some of the things we've done to get to this work thus far. But today, I'm going to teach you all how to take a Meta Moment, okay? Alright. So with the Mood Meter, we learned how to thus far recognize and understand and label our emotions by using the Mood Meter. So Meta Moments, what they do is they help us learn how to express and regulate those emotions. Like I said, how can we move from the red or the low energy to the high positive energy? So by using this tool and taking a Meta Moment, we can express ourselves in ways that make us feel good about ourselves and help us avoid hurting others, right? We talk about positive mindset every day. And we talked about our personal toolbox, right? And we envision our best selves. So today, I want to teach you how we can take a Meta Moment. So the first step in doing this is something happens, right? We're going to take a look at a scenario between Mike and Joe, and we're going to think about how we feel if we were in this situation. If you were Mike or Joe, and where are you would be on the Mood Meter? We're going to try to label that, okay? We're going to turn and talk with our partners. And then think about what's causing them to feel this way, okay? So we're going to take a little look here.
What to do?
Let's see if we can catch three passes in a row.
Problem, let's see if it...
It says...
You're so lucky, see if you can catch this one.
Oh, yeah, I think I could start out right this evening next year.
Well, I saw what Joe said the other day.
What did he say? He said we'll win more games if you didn't play better, sweetheart.
He said that?
Yeah.
Then talk. You fumbled two times in the game against Southport.
I know.
What are you going to do?
I don't know, but something. Let's go get something to eat.
Yeah, I'm trying to make an extra point.
I'll be right back.
Hey, Joe.
What's up?
We were going to play video games, then aren't you going to let me in?
No, I'm in, I have my friends in my house.
We can talk.
Okay. We want to go back, and we want to think. What would we do? Let's turn and talk to our partners. How would you be feeling on the Mood Meter if you were Mike or Joe? Turn and talk to your partners, let's partner up. Alright, so let's see though for one second. In three, two, one. So I heard a few feelings that were popcorned out onto the Mood Meter. How would you feel? Let's popcorn out, Sophia. You would not feel good, so can we pick a mood on the Mood Meter? Maybe upset? That sounds like that. Uncomfortable.
If I was Mike, I'd feel like I'd be angry if he's...
Angry even, right? So it's perfectly normal to have all these feelings and feel this way, and what's important is how we handle ourselves when we're feeling this way. Thinking back to our toolbox. So step two. When you sense a difference in your mood, what happens? Your thinking might change, your body might feel different, your face might change, right? So what are some thoughts when you have, when you're feeling this situation? So think back to the mood you just named and labeled, and how would your mind be feeling, right? How would your body start to act differently, right? We talk a lot about how you show these emotions. Might you may show those emotions in a negative way? How would your face look? Turn and tell your partner.
Face would look...
Alright, Serones, nice job. I heard a lot of good answers. So lots of times when we feel certain ways, something happens, our senses change, our emotions start going, and we see that in our facial expressions, we feel that, right? So the second step when taking a Meta Moment is to really pause, okay? When we notice these things, these changes are happening in our mind and body, we need to stop and pause before we respond because like Ms. Serone says, you are in control of who? Yourself, right? So you can take a moment and think about that. So here are a couple of options. We've all learned how to do the deep belly breathing, right? Can we, can we show, let's practice that for our audience. That's one strategy, right? We breathe in through our nose, right? And feel your diaphragm and breathe out through your... But, so we know that taking a deep breath, that's one strategy we use for a Meta Moment. And we envision our best self. Okay, what does our best self look like? Can you all popcorn out some of the words you use to describe your best self?
Confident.
Confident. Unstoppable. Positive.
A beast.
Yes.
Happy. Cheerful. Respectful, right? So all of these things, when we take that Meta Moment, we can envision our best self. That leads us to our next step, seeing your best self. Right, Theo? So when we take a moment to pause and breathe, these are some of the things we can do to get our mindset in the best space, right? So we just popcorned out some of the words that we use to describe our best self. And we want to think about how would our best self act in this situation? So now, go back. You're in Mike or Joe's shoes. Can you tell your partner, turn and talk? How would your best self act in that situation? I'm going to speak up, right? That's part of using your voice. Good. Alright, Serones, nice job. So I heard a lot of really good ways that your best self would act in this situation. You know what else I heard? A lot of you took ideas from your toolbox. Remember, we made our own personal toolbox. We talked about how sometimes a strategy that works for me might not work for you. Maybe I need to go to the gym or take a walk before I come back and talk to Mike, right? Or maybe you need to just, you know, go listen to some music or read a book. So one strategy that we really encourage you to do, to use, is some positive self-talk, right? Keep yourself in that positive mindset. Which leads us to step four. So you're going to pick a strategy and you're going to act. We think back to our toolbox, right? One tool we talk about often that we can all five in the moment is to think positive. Think about your best self and give yourself some positive best talk, okay? So say something that might help you calm down. What could you say to yourself to help you not be annoyed? Turn and tell your partner.
What would you say?
Maybe you can do one of this.
Or say, you know, I...
Nice work, Serones. So what you did was when you dug back into that toolbox, you regulated yourself. That's what, that's what that R word is. How can I regulate myself, okay? So you're no longer feeling annoyed. What can you say to your friend? Let's popcorn out some things we could say once we've taken a Meta Moment.
Maybe if I was Mike, maybe I could say I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry, maybe like you misheard what I said, right? Use our words.
If I was Mike, I'd probably say, hey, John, you could come play with my other friend.
Yeah, you would invite him to play and kind of maybe sort those things out. Great, so you did a nice job. So remember, today and every day, not only in the classroom but outside of the classroom, when these moments happen, you want to think back to our Ruler, how to take a Meta Moment. This is, what's an effective strategy that will work for you, for you to be your best self? And you did a great job.
So we're going to walk, we're going to walk back up to the Chappaqua area, nicely done.
Alright, Serones, we can light it up.
I'm going to venture a guess that our fourth waivers can teach our adults about the Meta Moment. But I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Serone to go just over the few slides for some other information for you, and then the board will have an opportunity to ask the students questions.
Hey, welcome. So as you saw, the students downstairs every morning, we follow the Ruler protocols of checking in on the Mood Meter daily where students can physically move their space to name their feelings. So we want to encourage students to start off with a positive mindset, but it also gives me a pulse for where our students are at so I can get them ready for their best learning. Next slide. Okay, um, in the beginning of the year, the first unit of the Ruler protocol is we begin creating a class charter. So it focuses on the biggest feeling words that our students want to feel in the classroom in order to feel safe and valued. You can see each was valued, equaled, and supported, but we also gave ways that we can actually do those things. And each small group made their own small group charter. So daily, we prepare for a morning meeting. This is what our students walk into daily. So they come in, they check in, they jot their feeling down on a post-it. It helps them take a moment to prepare what they would like and did not like to share during Community Circle. Also, there's a prompt daily that's posted, and students can respond to on the post-it and use that to refer to during the Community Circle. So we saw the Community Circle routine downstairs. Students during Community Circle practice active listening, speaking. They share ideas, they build connections, share feelings. We do a lot of perspective-taking during this time. Every student has a voice, and every student is actively listening and building connections with one another. So as we saw today, just to give you a free of what happened, we built, we worked on, built, using the Community Circle to build strategies and build a toolbox that our classroom agreed upon, different ways that we can shift and regulate our emotions from positive to negative. You know, mindset is everything, and we know that no two students have the same strategies in their toolkit. So students were then next, able to, on the next slide, you can see some examples of where students built their own toolkit on the C-Saw and on paper. So they can refer to that throughout the day if they need to. The next step in these lessons was we were, we did a whole, working on visualizing your best self. What does that look like? What does that sound like? What does that feel like? And students were able to create a, visualizing their best self on a C-Saw, different scenarios we give them, as we saw tonight with the Meta Moment. So they have this on paper and virtually that they can refer to in times they need to. And tonight, you saw the lesson, which they also saw for the first time, working on creating a Meta Moment where it's just taking the moment to pause and think before we react. So we hope that helps them in school and on the outside. And that's...
Morning, board, everybody, the volunteers at this time, also the students.
I want to start by saying thank you. Thank you to our fourth graders for showing us how you use Ruler. It was really great to get to go into your classroom and watch you. And I guess one question I have is, so these are really good skills, and they're skills that will serve you well into adulthood. And so I guess my question is, do you find that you're able to use these strategies outside of the school? And have you been able to use them in your life outside of West Orchard?
Yeah, I use them outside of baseball, outside of school. If I'm like playing at a baseball game and I like strike out or pop out or something like that, I just think of like something happier.
My old school, some of my, some of the kids there were really annoying, so I had to take deep breaths a lot.
I like Harrison, my team isn't exactly the best baseball team in the league. So I've kind of gotten used to losing. I use my strategy, like when I strike out, I think, oh, I'm going to get another at-bat, I'm going to get another at-bat.
You keep that positive mindset, right? You tell yourself you're going to get another chance.
Were there any other questions?
Actually, he had a question for Aaron, but he already answered it.
I have a question. Do you think that it helps you navigate your friendships better? And do you think that it helps you talk to your friends when someone's upset?
Yeah, shit, that's why you get to know someone better.
Yeah, I feel like at recess, if we're playing like football and someone thinks it's out of bounds, or someone thinks it's inbounds, and like then you start fighting, you can basically, you basically just like talk about it and like maybe say it's a redo.
Well, so, one time we were playing Gaga at...
Well, some, one time we were playing Gaga at extra recess for P E and well, well, we had a big fight and I just had to take a few deep breaths, calm down, you know, deep breathe.
Tell me you said crunches?
Yeah, I have a question. So I know when we're in the classroom and we're giving our stories now and we say, yes, I did this, I took the deep belly breaths and I, you know, took a moment to deep breathe, but was there ever a time really that you were not your best self and you didn't take that meta moment? And then what did you do to get back to your best self to solve that problem?
Sometimes I'm home, I have to go because my sister's annoying. Um, but I can't do it until I get it solved. Um, but sometimes I just get really annoyed because there's sometimes, sometimes I just get really mad and I try to just like calm down and just like be positive.
Back at my old school, I would, and for the first half of it, I would practically explode every day.
Do you feel like you would use strategies moving forward?
Yeah, I just.
When it comes to friendships, I think.
I just have to like separate myself for like just three minutes now.
So I, I don't really have a question. I just, I wanted to make a request. I have two teenagers in my house and I was just curious if I could get one of you to volunteer to come and reteach some of these lessons. Uh, and I was curious if any of you have older siblings or even your own parents? Have you taught any of these techniques to anybody else in your house?
Have you tried any of these, any of your family members some of these strategies? Or do you wish to find when your family member could have used the strategy? Aaron, and how you support them?
Well, honestly, like, I taught my mom this and she told me she does too. But, um, when I get annoyed, it starts singing in my head and something about that just calms me down and my mom told me she does that too, so, yeah.
That's great, so it sounds like you made connection with your mom, right? Or maybe you learned that strategy from mom.
I taught my brother when he was struggling with his leg out, to get his breath.
Sometimes my brother gets like mad if like he, if we're playing baseball in the backyard and he strikes out and I just tell him that he was as good as I was at his age, so he shouldn't have mad when he strikes out.
Great, well, that was amazing. So thank you, West Dorchester students and the faculty. You know, on giving the board a brief of what's happening on the website at our elementary level. We really appreciate you being here. And I know many of you need to go home. Thank you to our parents. And I would like our students to come up to center stage. We're gonna take a big picture of you with our West Dorchester staff for the website. Oh yeah, come right up here on the stage, this is great. He's in there. Are you dated, you ready? Now let's give them another round of applause. Alright, good work, everybody. I know you can head home or you can stay for the meeting. I'm not sure if you're gonna put that. Thank you, Jim. Thank you.
We're just gonna give them a minute to get on their way before we continue. Thank you. I know it's not as much fun when you can't come with us to the classrooms, but I hope you guys were able to see from here what was going on in the classroom. And so we'll now, we wanted to, to let our younger students present first so that it's not a longer night than it already is for them to come to the board meeting. We know that hopefully they are all going home to bed now and we'll move on to the president's report. It has been a horrifying and devastating few days. We woke Saturday morning to learn that Hamas, a terrorist organization, had launched a large-scale terrorist attack and invasion of Israel. The atrocities being committed against civilians being broadcast for the world to see defies description. And the systematic murder of Israeli citizens has resulted in the largest loss of Jewish life in a single day since the Holocaust. I know that this community has been deeply impacted by these terrorist attacks as many of us have family and friends in Israel and in the region and are terrified for their safety. The board and the district, in the strongest terms possible, condemn these terrorist attacks. In the wake of the terrorist attacks and invasion, there has been another horrifying development, which is the increase and in some cases outpouring of antisemitic incidents and sentiments. What we were told would not happen if we never forgot, if we were vigilant in our remembering and our teaching, is happening again. It's happening around the world and it's happening here in Chappaqua. Let me be clear and say in no uncertain terms, this district will not tolerate any incidents of antisemitism, nor will we tolerate hate speech, antisemitic or otherwise. Unfortunately, in addition to the global acts of hatred, I need to discuss two acts of antisemitism here at home. There was a swastika in the bathroom at Greeley yesterday. A swastika is hate speech. Over the years, as you know, we, like many communities, have found swastikas on school properties. Sometimes we catch the person who drew them, sometimes we do not. But each incident is unsettling and upsetting for our students in our community. To find a swastika in the wake of this weekend's terrorist attack on Israel and subsequent demonstrations in support of the attack in New York City, where marchers were also displaying swastikas, goes well beyond unsettling. It feels like a threat and none of our students or anyone else in our buildings or our community should ever feel threatened in our schools. If you have any information regarding this incident, please report it. You can speak to an adult in the district or use the anonymous reporting tool on our website. We must fight hate as a community. I want to also address the incident that took place last week. At a community service expo at Greeley, which is a longstanding event here, one organization displayed antisemitic material as part of their posters. This organization has been a participant in the expo for many years, seeking to involve students in climate change-related work. When a student noticed the antisemitic imagery that was part of their posters and confronted the participant, she left the building. When the administration looked further into the organization, it became clear that in addition to doing work on climate change, this organization also had ties to groups that promulgate hate speech, specifically antisemitic hate speech. The representative of this group who brought the antisemitic imagery to campus has been banned from the campus and from all of our campuses. We also learned that this group was posting that it has ties to a student club, the DSA Club at Greeley. Anything related to our school district was posted without our permission. The DSA Club at Greeley is no longer active for lack of an advisor. I do need to take a moment to be clear on something, though. We cannot shut down clubs because of their beliefs or positions. As a public school district, if we allow any clubs, we have to be viewpoint neutral. If and when a club uses language or imagery that is classified as hate speech, then we can take action as it violates our code of conduct. But we cannot just shut down a club for having a viewpoint with which we disagree. However, the DSA Club is currently not active because they no longer meet our requirements. I want to also acknowledge that at times, particularly in times of crisis, we are often criticized for moving too slowly or waiting too long to respond. What you perceive as a delay is the board and administration working to be sure that our teachers are prepared to support our students and also making sure that when we do speak to the community in whatever way, we are doing so with accurate and full information whenever possible. Sometimes it takes time to make sure that we fully understand an incident and that we've explained our position or action to those who might disagree with it so that nobody feels surprised by our response. We are dealing with children and while we want to keep the community informed as fully and as quickly as possible, our first priority is and must be to protect the children in our care. Sometimes it takes longer than you would like to be in a place to do that before we speak publicly. I want to finish speaking about this with one final point. Our Jewish families are scared. Our Muslim families are also scared. I know as a board member and as a Jewish woman, that this was Hamas, a terrorist organization that propagated these attacks and continues to terrorize Israel. We know that this was not condoned by our Muslim friends and neighbors and we want to say clearly that we will not tolerate hate of any kind against members of our community and that all of our children must know that they are supported and loved. We ask for your help and the help of the whole community as we navigate this world and try to at least eradicate the hatred at home that we cannot in the world. Before I switch gears to much more run-of-the-mill, I wanna, I just, I don't wanna say anything, so. Um, you know, we had organized over the weekend and communicated on Monday with our staff. So they were ready for Tuesday morning, our professional development team, our administrators. We worked over the weekend to make sure that there was clear direction and resources. And we held meetings at the secondary level specifically, just to clarify our expectations for staff in the morning for those who muted it and sent follow-up communication. And then we, the central office checked in with our administrators at Princeton that same day to see if any additional support was needed. And I, I say that to you, knowing that, you know, in the afternoon on Tuesday, I started hearing from a lot of parents that they needed to hear from me. And in hindsight, I wish I would have sent that out earlier on Monday or Tuesday morning and I didn't and that was an error. I did, I waited too long to respond to what our community needed and I also want to show that I know our families are very concerned about the two antisemitic incidents at Greeley and of course, so are we. I also want to add the very statement that I'm responsible for what happens in our spaces fully. I take full responsibility for what happened at that service expo and I will take the necessary steps with the high school team to make sure it doesn't happen again. Those are our spaces, I'm in charge of them and we need to do better for our kids. And I know also what happens is sometime, during these moments, people, they want to know what our educational approach is with regards to antisemitism. And it is extensive, we've sent it out before to our families, we sent it out last May. But people in this moment need to understand that again. So I haven't, I have a superintendent webinar planned to share some of that E E I work in December, but if the board after this meeting would like us to present that earlier in the future meeting, we can certainly do that for the community. So you can take your lead on, if you'd like us to do that. It'd be very easy for us because we, we have it all, we have it organized. Because we know it's a very important project. So I do wanna, I wanna, I wanted to share that, just on the behalf of what I felt like I needed to do and then what I'm thinking about and what I should have done differently. Before I move on to the more mundane parts of the president's report, I want to give available members an opportunity to say something. I feel moved and compelled to speak to let our students and families know that the incomprehensible acts of violence that has unfolded this past weekend was frightening and scary. It is difficult to find just the right words to offer any ounce of comfort and hope. Irrespective of our diverse backgrounds and beliefs, it is crucial that we come together to protect the children of our local and global communities. Our students, regardless of where they come from, deserve a safe and peaceful environment as well as a future filled with hope and opportunity. The tragic loss of innocent lives is a devastation that knows no borders or boundaries. As a school community, we are tasked with fostering an environment that prioritizes the well-being of our students, both now and in the future. It is essential that we provide the support, compassion, and understanding to our students in need during this scary and challenging time. We must stand as pillars of strength and support for our children. Our school is comprised with students from diverse backgrounds, including those directly impacted by these events. We are here to create a safe and inclusive space where every student's voice is heard and valued. My heart goes out to the children who are caught in the midst of this turmoil, to the families who endure unimaginable hardships, and to the students within our own community who may have personal ties to the affected regions. We need to remember that the anguish of innocent people, especially children, transcends any geopolitical complexities. I hope for a future where the well-being of innocent children and families is never compromised.
Uh, want to echo the comments of my colleagues and the administration about the events from the past few days. I offered a reflection maybe about a year ago when we had some incidences of hate with a different group on campus and I, I used the sort of framing of, well, what could I do? What could the school do and what could the community members do? So I was sort of thinking in those same terms when I was thinking about what to say tonight. So I thought I would just relay what happened in my house the last few days, just give people something to access that maybe is helpful to you. In my house, my wife's Jewish and I'm not. My kids have had some Jewish experiences, but have not been raised in the Jewish tradition entirely. So this has prompted a new level of dialogue and sharing of traditions and history in our house that we haven't been able to have before. And so trying to find something positive out of this that can, you know, help our family come together more and understand the plight of those who suffered and what we've seen happen. And I was thinking, you know, it would be really great if every family could galvanize around something like that similarly. There will be instances like this where your family is really emotionally heightened, you know, stressed and hurt by it, an event like this. And there'll be other times where there's people around you who are affected in this way. And so, you know, there'll be times when you can, you can maybe do some more introspection or some times when you can be there for others. I've tried to do that too, but I've tried to do this the last few days to try to understand better and to listen to others more. And that's been helpful for me and maybe that would be helpful for some others in the community as well. In terms of schools' actions, I'm grateful that we were able to come together over the weekend and work through as much as we could. I appreciate Dr. Atten's point about, you know, trying to add more urgency to how we react to the situations going forward and I hope to help with that. And again, just, it's our collective responsibility to try to create an inclusive community. School, school staff, board members, parents, and even just the broader community, we all have to work on this to create the community that we want. I made the same comment a year ago, just to reiterate that here. It's another opportunity for us to try to come together.
I want to start by saying. I want to start by saying that while I respect and acknowledge that I serve on a five-member board and most often we speak in one face, a statement tonight as a personal one because this is very personal to me. Instances of antisemitism have been spiking globally at an alarming rate for quite some time, an epidemic that we are unfortunately not immune to here in Chappaqua and not even close. The incident that occurred at Greeley last week handled admirably and with immediacy by the administration, served as a local precursor for the atrocities that began this weekend in Israel. As the important and unspeakably barbaric images are disseminated, those of us who have been bestowed leadership voices within this community need to do just that. We need to lead with our voice and with action. Christine, I appreciate the strength and clarity in her message to the community yesterday. As we navigate this going forward, I feel it is incumbent upon us to support our Jewish students, some of whom have family in Israel, and to support all of our students. and to support all of our students, some who are exposed to the horrifying realities that are occurring with the accompaniment of the nauseating imagery, and to drown out the outspoken supportive rhetoric for these terrorists predicated in ignorance and hate. I wish that as a board, we denounced and repudiated antisemitism globally sooner, as unfortunately, an act of despicable, brazen cowardice followed yet another swastika showing up on our campus in our own backyard yesterday. Tonight, I make a promise and commitment to reprioritize the number-one mission in this district's five-month strategic plan, providing a sense of belonging for all of our students, to ensure all members of our community feel seen, heard, and protected in moments where their identity, their beliefs, and their religion are targeted. We will not allow groups steeped with antisemitic and figurative agendas near our kids ever again. Enough is enough. To my fellow Jewish community members here and everywhere, I'm left with questions about how there is not universal condemnation of these acts of terrorism and how there has been any justification and sometimes mind-blowing celebration of such horror. I have no answer to all those questions, but a clear path forward includes educating our students, arming them with a deep understanding of complex issues so that they can make informed decisions, comforting them, supporting them in times of crisis, and continuing our mission to create an environment where hate of any kind is met with uninhibited opposition.
I want to say that I thank you all for your words tonight, and I agree with everyone's statements. This is my statement. Terrorism and the violence against Israel must be condemned. Antisemitism and the recent biased events in our schools must be condemned. bigotry against any group must be condemned. As a Jewish woman, the last few days have been garbage. And as a board member, I know that our job is not to protect only one group. As a school district, one of the most important goals is to make sure that each and every student feels safe here, that they feel important, valued, and supported. We cannot tolerate anything in our schools that goes against that mission. We must not allow any messages supporting the unjustified violence inflicted upon Israel this past weekend. Nor must we permit any messages of hate toward any members of our community, whether it be antisemitic or Islamophobic. The board oversees the education, safety, and emotional well-being of every child in this district, no matter our differences. It's hard to move on to the mundane from that. But that is also what we now must do, and please know that we are all available to talk to any community members who wish to speak with us about this or any other issues. To that point, we also held our first office hours yesterday. We think they went well and hope that those of you who came did too, although the night session apparently had a number of emotions. We encourage people to participate, and we'll refer to the instructions on how to sign up roughly before our next office hours, which will be in November. But also do ask that if you sign up, you either show up or cancel, as there were other people who did want spots. We're going to try something else new in an effort to facilitate communication with the community. After each meeting, we will post the superintendent's report and president's report on our website so that those are accessible to the community in a simplified fashion. As we try to use this time to highlight issues of interest or concern, as well as some of the work of the board and the administration, we hope that posting this for the community will help people keep abreast of our work if they are unable to watch the meeting and then evaluate whether they want to take the time to go back and watch the full recording. We will welcome your feedback on whether or not you find this helpful. We will post tonight's reports as soon as tomorrow. As soon as we can. We have a work session scheduled for tomorrow to hear a presentation on the proposed chat line and discuss the counterclass for us to submit a letter in support of the project. Our work session is at 12:30 in the BOE conference room at the Ed Center. Work sessions are not recorded and do not provide an opportunity for community participation, but are public if anyone wants to attend and listen. You are always welcome to email us any thoughts or reactions after the work session. I'm sorry to have spoken for so long tonight, but there was a lot that needed to be said, so.
So I just, I have a couple brief items before we move into the next part of the agenda. We're going to link the community up, so. I just want to acknowledge that on the agenda tonight, the audit report is for the board's consideration for approval that was presented at our last meeting, so. We usually do it on the same night, but we weren't able to do so this year, so that is on resolution tonight for your consideration. We also have two of our policies from the last feeding that will be presented for adoption that didn't have any changes or recommendations from the board or members of the community. The first is to just clarify when coaches are working for us, just like a teacher, they, they can't be paid for private lessons with their athletes. That's just the gist of what this policy says. And that if we have coaches who aren't teachers, who have businesses in sports that they're coaching, when we're doing team cuts and placements, we'll have an independent evaluator part of that process. And then second was, we created an attendance policy based on the audit, and we looked at different school districts, and basically, we adopted some language, and this is primarily for our high school students, but it does apply to our elementary and middle school students as well, that if you would like to participate in an extracurricular program, you need to come to school, and it gives some pointers on how much of the school day that you need to attend. But if you have an excused absence, you can, the principal will work with families, because we understand that things happen. But we don't want students who are not here because they're ill coming to our events, and sometimes that does happen, so we wanted to anchor some language for, for our kids and for our parents and for our extracurricular activities that are often sponsored by outside organizations. In terms of our SRO timeline, we do have our two officers on the agenda to take your consideration, which is great, we're ahead of schedule. And we still have them slated to start on the Monday first, but if they can begin earlier, that would be great, provided you approve them tonight. I'm going to have Josh just introduce them briefly, since he led the interview process for the district.
Sure. So we are happy to present Joseph Carbone and Edison Braho, who were incredible candidates and incredible Newcastle police officers. We, throughout the process, were impressed that with all of the candidates that Jim Carroll presented us, I mean, we left that meeting feeling like these two candidates are going to be in our schools, build community with our students and our faculty and our community, as well as keep our schools safe and secure throughout it. Joseph, you just wanted to sit down and read a book with him along and get to know him, as well as felt like he is going to get to know every child in that building. Edison has been a substitute SRO. He's been with us for a while now and has already been a part of our school community. And again, we left extremely impressed with the state of candidates that Jim Carroll sent us. It was really difficult for us to make the decision, but ultimately, we felt that both of these people are going to keep our schools safe and build relationships with our families and our students.
Thank you, Josh. And now I just wanted to briefly touch base with the community on our RFP update for literacy review.
Thank you. So I just wanted to give you a quick update on where we are with the request for proposals for literacy. So the deadline for the submission was October 2nd, so that's passed. That's kind of been locked in terms of submissions. We, we got six proposals, and I just did a quick first pass. Actually, it wasn't that quick because they come in, they're pretty comprehensive, but I just wanted to give you some preliminary information with regard to what came in. The yeses on this chart are good things, the no's not as good. You can see, we require a CCSD docs attached to the submission. Typically, those are pretty easy to secure, but three of the groups didn't submit them, so that's not a deal breaker. It's just that it's something that, like, they didn't sign the documents. It's good to go out with the RFPs. The all components is just a response to, did they actually, you know, check all the boxes that we asked them to check as part of the RFP? We have some requirements that go out, and the ones that have a plus and minus, it was just hard to tell with regard to their response. We asked, for example, the qualifications of people that would be doing the actual RFP, and in some cases, they didn't commit to a specific person or people in their agency. They talked more generally about who they have available and kind of their stable of consultants, so we didn't need to look a little more deeply into those. And then the edu program evaluation, I look for experiencing evaluating educational programs, like curriculum specifically. A few of them were more geared towards providing professional development, so that's where you see the no. That, that wouldn't necessarily exclude them. They just don't have, like, evidence or examples of doing this kind of evaluation in the past. And then you can see that from there down, literacy experience, K-6 experiences, and agnostic. What I meant by agnostic is, I didn't want somebody tied to a specific program, especially one that we use, you know, to come in and review that program. I didn't think that was appropriate, and honestly, I didn't really want someone attached to a competitor's program. I wanted somebody a little more independent from there. So that's what we've gotten in so far, just so the first pass can give you a sense of where we stand. What I'd recommend, so, so we weren't able to, or I wasn't comfortable just saying, like, any of these didn't meet the criteria completely. I felt like they're all still in the, you know, in the potential pool of programs that we should look at or consultants that we should look at. And so here's a proposed path forward for the board, but I'd just like, we'd like a little bit of feedback in terms of next steps. So what I'd like, what I think is a good next step is to assemble a committee, including myself, Alyssa Stover. Stover is our elementary director. Kate Nauman is our element, or elementary literacy person, she's also our A-12 director for literacy as a state-end position as a professional developer. I would like to have at least one board representative, a reading teacher, an elementary teacher, a middle school teacher, at least one building administrator, we might consider two, one from the elementary, one from the middle school, because this does go up to sixth grade. Have this group, this committee that we formed, review the paper submissions, narrow the field perhaps from six to maybe three or four. Do some initial interviews of those, you know, the people that are left in the group to try to narrow the field a little bit, and then bring probably our top two or three to the board. I think it could bring you some choices of the whole board, but I don't know that it's the best time spent to go through all six, so the hope is that we can narrow the field appropriately before we get to the whole board, and then you can see, you know, interview, you know, the, the top couple of candidates. And that committee could decide if we do two or three or even four, if we feel like there's viable options there for you. So that's my, you know, recommended path forward. We'll be open to suggestions for the next steps.
Can I ask you the question? When you said that there were two proposals that sort of said, this is our, our stable of consultants, but we don't commit, do you think we have the ability to make them commit before we would select them?
Sure, absolutely. There, there was one that had a whole bunch of consultants that they, like, in their pool of consultants, but then they pulled out three specifically, and they said, these are the three that we have work on your project. There were some others that just gave us, you know, a whole list of people and credentials, so I think it would be fair to say, and honestly, when we get to a point where we contract with these people, we could, we would have as part of the contract who we'd be working with, and also that they can't, like, sub, sub this out to another group or another individual, so we could write that right into the contract.
Can you remind us of the timeframe of the next part of the process?
Yeah, so, so this, I would hope that we could get, you know, depending on the, what you'd like to see us for a path forward, I, I think we could get you people to interview at the next, like, late October meeting. I think it's the 24th, our next meeting. So, you know, the hope is we can narrow this field over the next couple of weeks and, and have, you know, a few people that you could interview as a whole board on the 24th.
Okay, so I just wanted to, before I highlight some of the important events that are coming up between now and our next meeting, just want to acknowledge that Joe Gromando has retired. Very, very happy for him, but of course, I'm going to miss him tremendously, but he's going to stay on and do consulting for us until we can find a new director. And so we're in that, Andrew's already started that process, so congratulations to Joe, but we will continue to work with Joe until we are able to transition to our new leadership in the, in the office. And then we'll find a moment to honor him on a later date. On Thursday night is ZNL Open House at Bell. And then Jamie's office is also having an open house for PPS families, but anyone can attend next week, and I also want to acknowledge next week is School Board Recognition Week, so thank you. We should do things during that week to recognize you, but there's not a meeting between that and when it begins, and this is a a job that takes a lot of time, and you provide a lot of support to me and to the central office on behalf of the community and for our kids, so I just want to take a moment to, to recognize that at this meeting. And then I want to remind our families that next Friday is Superintendent Practice Day, so we'll have professional development for our staff. And that's the end of the superintendent report, so thank you.
That brings us to our committee reports. Jump on in if you have anything. Apparently, it's been a quiet couple of weeks for committees. That brings us to the public comment period. We welcome public comments, and in respect for each other's time, we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. Board members may also be contacted via email or phone. After the public comment period has been completed, board members may have a discussion amongst themselves regarding comments presented. I also just want to be clear that during the public comment period, please do not mention any names either of students or adults.
Good evening. My name's Alana Trayvon. I have a child at Horace Greeley. I'm a child of Seven Bridges. And while I appreciate everyone's comments tonight about the antisemitic incidents at the school, I'd like to know what the policy the district has in place on inviting speakers and organizations from outside the school system to interact with our children, and if these speakers are at all vetted. It was deeply frightening that at last week's community expo at Horace Greeley, an event intended to offer our students volunteer opportunity with local causes, Westpac, a group identified by the Anti-Defamation League as an antisemitic hate group, and one that fiscally sponsors groups that openly support Hamas, was welcomed to participate in the event, during which the Westpac representative not only displayed anti-mystic, anti-semitic materials, but made repeated antisemitic and anti-Israeli remarks to our students. For those of you in this room who are not Jewish, or perhaps just unaware, anti-Israel rhetoric is a subversive method for expressing the overarching antisemitism in what has become an increasingly socially acceptable context. How can parents feel comfortable that the district is providing a safe environment for our students when hate groups are welcomed onto campus and sanctioned by school representatives? And what message does this send to all students and our larger community? You suggest that student groups cannot be banned based on beliefs, but I question that. Could a student start a Ku Klux Klan group, a Proud Boys group, or a Westboro Baptist Church group? I hope that the board will consider a motion to prohibit any group from being formed on campus that has been declared a hate group. The district constantly promotes that it is an inclusive community, but I find it horrifying that a hate group would be counted among those that are embraced. Thank you.
My name is Warren Knapp. My daughter is a Greeley student, and my son graduated last June. We are a proud Jewish family, and Shabbat Bar has been our home for 18 years. In May of this year, I appeared before this administration and the outgoing board to address antisemitic flyers that my daughter encountered outside her classroom at Greeley. The flyers contained anti-Zionist rhetoric and images, all of which you've seen through your science. And two more codes on each flyer that was linked to Westpac, an organization that raises money to support anti-Israel projects and groups, and that's putting in a gentleman. Anti-Zionism is opposition to Jews having a Jewish state in their ancestral homeland and denies the Jewish people's right of self-determination, expressing the belief that the Jews alone among the people of the world do not have a right to self-determination. At the May meeting, I alerted the board to the fact that the Anti-Defamation League has long recognized that anti-Zionism is antisemitism, and that the board's response understated the seriousness of what it just said. The district dismissed the flyers as political postcards. At the May meeting, I also reported to you that this was not the first, not the second, or the third time one of my children had come home reporting antisemitism in the CCSD. I also gave you illustrative examples. Again, in May, several of you on the stage now were there for them. At the May school board meeting, I begged you not to ignore the skyrocketing increase in antisemitism, both in New York and nationally, and I asked the district to enlist independent assistants to please work on this issue. And stunningly, not a single then-sitting board member contacted me after my remarks last May, not a single call or email from anyone. And tonight, nearly And tonight, nearly five months later, I am here to plead with you once again. Last week, Westpac, the same group responsible for the anti-Semitic flyer last May, was welcomed back to the Greeley campus to exhibit an ACPA-sponsored Community Service Expo, where once again, they presented their anti-Semitic poison at our school. Thankfully, some of our students confronted the presenter of these materials. These courageous leaders deserve our praise. I didn't hear that one. I'm not going to get into the Greeley DSA call other than to say, check their Instagram accounts. I'm not sure that they are. Can I have another minute?
We can motion you another minute. If that's one minute.
Thank you.
I have a motion, please, to extend the speaker's time by one minute. All in favor? You have an additional minute.
Thank you. The DSA's Instagram account, Greeley DSA, you should check it out. They're not doing it. It is high time this Board recognized that the district has a gaping blind spot when it comes to anti-Semitism. Enough is enough. I ask for an immediate independent investigation of the district's entire approach to all aspects of this issue led by a lot of leaders who are not picked by the BOE, the CCSD administrator, or any favored affiliates in our community. I am also asking the School Board to be more supportive of our Jewish people in our district, who like their parents are suffering the weight of the horrors unfolding in Israel. Let me give you a very small example of how this horror is landing on our children. This summer, my daughter went to Israel for a month. Yesterday, while in school, she found out that she stayed at the kibbutz where 40 babies were murdered. Later that afternoon, my daughter said, I spent time in that exact place. I ate with them. That is not even a step of what families are dealing with.
I have to ask you to stop. Please, you're out of time. Can you please email us your comments?
I'm very guilty. You dismissed them. And none of you have contacted me since May. I'm happy to just work on solving this problem, but please don't insult me by giving me the brush off anymore. Look, see what this does. Enough is enough.
Sir, your time is up. That's the end of the public comment here.
A lot of what I was going to say has already been addressed, so I will spare repeat. But I do want to note that last May, when I learned that Westpac had posted a flyer of some sort in one of our schools that misappropriated Holocaust imagery, I emailed the district. I was told it's a political speech and it was handled. I asked that it be called Anti-Semitism in a Lesson. I do want to commend the district this time for acting and calling it what it was and making us all safe. So thank you for that. And also, though, you mentioned that clubs cannot be banned on campus. I just want to direct the Board of Ed and Administration to Section 530 of the Student Code of Conduct. It defines hate speech and talks about ramifications for hate speech. I would just suggest that if there is a club on campus that is repeatedly inviting other organizations that are engaging in hate speech, it needs to be addressed. It needs to be taken seriously. And you absolutely can do something about it. It's in the book.
My name is Isaac Bluebooks. I am a student at Horace Greeley. I run the, or I am an executive of the Jewish Student Union. In the past, when there's been wars and fighting in other countries, such as within Russia and Ukraine, within a day, it's been covered in our classes and it has been thoroughly and in-depth explained to our students. Today, and yesterday, when we got to school, not a single class mentioned it. No teachers spoke of any of the conflict. We were not offered support by our teachers and we're not allowed for time. All of these anti-Semitic incidents get nothing more than email. And I would like it to be addressed and seen and given more time. I would like action to be taken against these incidents more than yesterday.
If there are no further public comments, we're going to move on to approvals and ratifications.
I want to just provide this one suggestion to me. But I am one of the Jaffe, a parent at Greeley and rabbi in town. If you're going to be doing a look overall at how the school administration looks at anti-Semitism and how Israel is discussed at school, I would suggest that the Ninth Great Global Curriculum, when it comes to Israel and how it is taught, might be part of that discussion as well. I met with the staff and thank you and lots of my observations over how both Jews are taught about and how Israel is taught about in the global program and the antiquated way in which both are done. And I would just suggest that this is a larger conversation, that perhaps that be brought into the specter as well. Thank you.
Yeah, I would just share that and some of the things in the comments that I'm hearing. If people are absolutely right, there needs to be some policy work and additional oversight, in addition to many of the other statements that were made that I agree with. So the Policy Committee has already discussed meeting and talking about what happened today. And with our return to, you know, see what is appropriate for us to do to make sure that we put procedures in place to prevent this from happening again. So we are committed to do that and be updating the Board at a future meeting.
Okay. That brings us to approvals and what of the improvements. May I have a motion, please, for 3.1, which is accepting the minutes of the September 27th Board of Education meeting? Any questions? All in favor? So Dr. Akaman went through, this is the second reading of Policy 3010, which is Item 3.2, which is the Board of Ethics edits. I will move Item 3.2. Can I have a second? Any questions, concerns? All in favor? Likewise, Item 3.3 is Policy 5015, second reading and adoption of the reverence of student attendance policy.
I'll move the attendance policy.
Any questions or concerns? All in favor? Dr. Akaman, 4.1 instruction was presented.
I'll move that the acceptance of supertrans recommendation for 4.1.
One second. Any questions or concerns? All in favor? Dr. Akaman, 4.2 non-instructional was presented. You accept supertrans recommendations for 4.2? Any comments or questions? All in favor? Brings us to consent agenda. The use of a consent agenda permits the Board of Education to make more effective use of its time by adopting in a single motion to cover these relatively routine matters which are included. Any member of the Board who wishes to discuss individually a particular piece of business on the consent agenda may so indicate, and that item will be considered and voted on separately, thus preserving the right of all Board members to be heard on any issue. I will move to consent agenda, which is 5.1 through 5.8. Any questions or concerns? All in favor? Brings us to 6, which is acknowledging the following contracts approved by Superintendent for Policy 6085. Item 6.1 and 6.2, which are two contracts previously approved by Dr. Akaman. I have a motion for 6.1 and 6.2. Any questions or concerns? All in favor? Nothing other than so that brings us to 8, which is acknowledging receipt of the Claimant's Auditor Report for September of 2023. Can I have a motion, please, for 8.1? All second. Any questions or concerns? All in favor? Brings us to notice of future meetings. Our next meeting will be Tuesday, October 24th at 7:00 PM. We will have our Warren for elementary presentation, but we will be meeting the Horace Greeley auditorium. And after that, our next meeting is Wednesday, November 15th, which is our Grafflin presentation, also at the Horace Greeley auditorium. Can I please have a motion to adjourn at 8:33 PM? All in favor?